Public meeting, please be advised this public meeting of the Washington County Board of Commissioners is video and audio livestreamed on our Commissioners Facebook page. As we do with every meeting, we start with a prayer. Today's prayers will be offered by Pastor Aaron Miller of the Life Church of Washington. Pastor Miller?
Good morning. I'd like to read scripture and then we'll pray. Proverbs, chapter three, says this, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart; do not depend on your own understanding only. Seek his will in all you do, and he will show you which path to take. Do not be impressed with your own wisdom; instead fear the lord and turn away from evil." Then you will have healing for your body, strength for your bones, honor the lord with your wealth and the best part of everything you produce; then he will fill your barns with grain, your vats will overflow with good wine. By wisdom the lord founded the earth; by understanding he created the heavens. By his knowledge the depths of fountains of the earth burst forth and the dew settles beneath the night sky." Let's pray for wisdom. Father, we come to you now in the name of your son, Jesus, and we ask today that you would lead this county with wisdom. Godlike precipitation, let wisdom fall on each and every one of us. As your scriptures command us to do, we pray for those who are in leadership. God, we ask that you would give wisdom and blessing to our commissioners, to those that are leading significant organizations in this county. We also ask God for our daughters and our sons, fill them with wisdom. God, we know that your word says, "Then healing will be in our bones and in our lives." That when we honor you with wealth, you will fill our barns and our vats. God, we thank you for these promises and we ask, as a first step in honoring you, that you would pour out blessings of wisdom upon each and every one of us. God, I pray for this meeting today, for this agenda, let it be touched by wisdom. We thank you for it today. We offer you the efforts, the creativity, all that we imagine and work towards. We offer you all of this work and ask that you would put your super on our natural and let there be wisdom expressed in this county, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Today we have our pledge allegiance, Michael Pierce. He's leading us today. He served as a United States Army veteran. He served as a first ranger combat medic for the eighty-second Airborne Division in his twenty-two years with the United States Army. He served in Iraq, Afghanistan, Korea, and Haiti. He continues his service to our community as a Washington County's own Veterans American Coordinator, where he helps our residents get the benefits they're entitled to. Michael?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with a regime and justice for all.
Thank you. May we see it? This time on our team, a motion to approve minutes number twelve ten, dated June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. There is no special order of business today and there is no agenda comments. No agenda comments?
Correct.
Great. Bring us right on to old business with our solicitor, Mr. Swett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item A, contract. The Planning Commission respectfully requests the Commissioners approve and ratify the construction contract for the tunnel number four redevelopment project. The contract amounted five hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents was awarded to Frank Gavlick and Sons Inc. This was the lowest, most responsive and responsible bid received. All costs will be federally funded and no county match is required.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Item B, bid award. Purchasing on behalf of buildings and grounds respectfully requests the Commissioners award the bid for the Washington County Courthouse door replacement to Stone Mile Group LLC, Kansasburg, Pennsylvania, for a total cost of nine hundred, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Effective the date of agreement through scope of work completion, unless otherwise terminated pursuant to the terms of the agreement or a thirty-day written notice. This was the lowest, most responsive and responsible bid received.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Bid award. Purchasing on behalf of the Planning Commission respectfully requests the Commissioners award the bid for the Washington County paving project to Morgan Excavating LP, Charlotte Ward, Pennsylvania, at their submitted project cost of three hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents. This was the lowest, most responsive and responsible bid received. Bid responses were reviewed and recommended for award by the planning and purchasing departments. Costs will be paid with Mingo gas lease funds.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Item D, RFP award. Purchasing on behalf of the Recorder of Deeds respectfully requests the Commissioners award the proposal for the Washington County Historical Indexing Project, Pelus Park, Illinois, at their submitted cost of two dollars and twenty-five cents per document for handwritten records and one dollar and seventy-five cents per document for typed records. This award is being made to the vendor that performed the pilot program for indexing and met all required criteria and qualifications. Costs will be paid with Recorder of Deeds operating fees.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Item E, bid award. Purchasing on behalf of the Planning Commission, Parks and Recreation respectfully requests the Commissioners award the bid to Log Cabin Fence Company, Inc. of Amity, PA, for the Cross Creek Park Quonset Hut for a thirty-by-forty-foot AccuSteel construction at the submitted bid price of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred ninety-five dollars plus warranty. This agreement will be effective date of award through installation completion. This was the lowest, most responsive and responsible bid received. Bid responses were reviewed and recommended for award by planning, parks, and recreation and purchasing departments.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Item F, bid extension. Purchasing respectfully requests the Commissioners authorize a thirty-day extension of the agreement for outdoor equipment, maintenance, and supplies for John Deere service to Middletown Tractor Sales, Washington, Pennsylvania. This contract will be effective July one, two thousand and twenty-five, through July thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six, with the option to extend for two additional one-year periods unless otherwise terminated pursuant to a thirty-day written notice. This was the lowest, most responsive and responsible bid received. Rates are a hundred and five dollars an hour, service rate, John Deere, VinTrak, five percent purchase discount, John Deere, VinTrak, ten percent purchase discount steel.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Item G, bid extension. Purchasing, or I'm sorry, pursuant to Act one forty-two, Senate Bill eleven fifty-four, effective February twenty, two thousand and one. Purchasing respectfully requests the Commissioners authorize a thirty-day extension of the bid pricing for a fourteen-unit T-hanger for Washington County Airport to erect a Tube, Inc., Harvard, Illinois, as additional time is needed to evaluate the bid processes.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Item H, bid extension. Purchasing respectfully requests the Commissioners authorize an extension of the bid contract for general construction services on an as-needed basis to McBracy Corporation, Washington, Pennsylvania, and Stone Mile Group Incorporated, Kansasburg, Pennsylvania. This contract extension will be effective July one, two thousand and twenty-five, through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-six, with options to extend for two additional one-year periods.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Item I, bid extension. Purchasing on behalf of buildings and grounds respectfully requests the Commissioners authorize an extension of the bid contract for elevator maintenance for all county facilities with Otis Elevator Company, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. This contract will be effective July one, two thousand and twenty-five, through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-six, with the option to extend for six additional one-year periods.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Item J, bid extension. Purchasing on behalf of the Planning Commission and Parks and Recreation respectfully requests the Commissioners authorize an extension of the bid for portable toilet rentals and vault pumping services to Johnny on the Spot LLC, doing business as United Site Services, Inc. of Westboro, Massachusetts. This was the lowest, most responsive and responsible bid received. Associated costs are on an as-needed basis. This contract will be effective June one, two thousand and twenty-five, through May thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six, with the option to extend for one additional one-year period unless otherwise terminated pursuant to the agreement.
So moved.
Portable toilet rental, a hundred dollars a unit per month, ADA toilet rental, one hundred and forty dollars a unit per month, vault pumping, twenty-nine cents a gallon, freshwater vault cleaning, fifty cents a gallon, cleaning chemicals, truck and operator fees included.
My apologies, Mr. Solicitor. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
That's the end of old business, Mr. Chairman.
To Commissioner Janus's defense.
Come to head.
Anytime that you would pause, I would always, when I had to move, I would always move prematurely, so I understand the pain. Thank you for your report, Mr. Solicitor. On a new business, Chief Clerk, please.
Thank you.
And this is a long one, so everyone here, I hope you packed a lunch today, has all the human services contracts from many years.
It's all that man in the tie right there, Spock.
Wait for me.
Hi.
Dr. Temeji, thank you.
Dr. Temeji, spread these out over the year, maybe? I don't know.
Chief Clerk, respectfully request the Commissioners authorize the Solicitor to file an affidavit on behalf of Washington County in the case of Tunnel Ridge LLC versus Mark West Liberty Mainstream and Resources LLC, ed. out at civil docket number CB twenty-twenty-five dash zero two eight five five, opposing request for injunctive relief by Tunnel Ridge against Mark West.
Second.
No, not yet, not yet, sorry. She was adjusting the volume.
Here, use this one.
It's a scratch, I'm working. Sorry. Okay. All right. Civil docket number CB dash twenty-twenty-five dash zero two eight five five, opposing request for injunctive relief by Tunnel Ridge against Mark West, insofar as it would have a devastating economic impact on oil and gas operations that would affect the county, neighboring townships, property, and royalty owners in the portion of this county.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, respectfully request the Commissioners authorize the Washington County Authority to adopt a responsible contractor policy. This policy would require the submission of a contract responsibility certification for developers, construction managers, or other lead contractors participating in a broadband construction project valued at twenty-five thousand dollars or more. The policy would further require company employee participation in a Class A apprenticeship training program for each separate trade or classification of each craft category. This would ensure workers are properly trained in construction skills and safety procedures.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, respectfully request the Commissioners approve an addendum to the sales agreement between the County of Washington and the Washington County Authority to extend the closing date for the transfer of the Justice Center to the county.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, respectfully request the Commissioners approve the appointment of Jeff Mills to the Redevelopment Authority Board and the reappointments of Brian Baer, Mark Weitner, Katie Hager, Trisha Bruthford, Brandon Schaper, and Stephanie Paluta to the Southwest Corner Workforce Development Board.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chief Clerk, on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority, respectfully request the Commissioners approve an agreement between the Redevelopment Authority and Herbert Rowland and Lubick and authorize payment in the amount of seventy-two thousand dollars for the preparation of a sewage facility plan update related to the Route five nineteen sewer extension project.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
The Planning Commission respectfully request the Commissioners approve the design contract with Gibson Thomas Engineering Company in the amount of four hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-seven cents for the Cross Creek number thirty-three bridge replacement project. All costs will be federally funded and no county match is required.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
The Planning Commission respectfully request the Commissioners approve the design contract with Larson Design Group in the amount of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-four cents for the Shortiers number forty-two bridge replacement project. All costs will be federally funded and no county match is required.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
The Planning Commission respectfully request the Commissioners approve and ratify the right-of-way agreement with MPLX for an additional pipeline under the Panhandle Trail in Robinson Township. Terms of the construction and trail protection remain the same. The new pipeline will extend the right-of-way boundary by fifteen feet and MPLX will pay Washington County five thousand dollars for this additional pipeline.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human resources. Respectfully request the Commissioners approve the arbitration award issued for terms and conditions of the collective bargaining agreement with the previously recommended annual salary increases to replace the expired.
I may interject. There's still ongoing union negotiations for this one. I motion to table this bill till further instruction from our Solicitor's office.
So moved.
Don't you need a second?
Yeah.
Oh, I seconded. I guess, did you motion?
You don't have to.
I said, I entertain a motion.
Yeah.
It's my fault. A second.
All right. For the record, item I has been tabled. Thank you, Chief Clerk, please continue.
You have to vote. Take a vote.
Oh, we do have to vote?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
We could take off the agenda, yeah.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay. Human resources. Respectfully request the Commissioners approve of privacy and security officer designation policy. This policy will designate Sarah Scott Esquire as the Privacy and Security Officer, effective July seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five, to ensure Washington County is in compliance with the laws and regulations pertaining to HIPAA.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human resources. Respectfully request the Commissioners approve an updated information confidentiality, privacy, and security standards policy. This policy will outline county employees' responsibilities when using IT equipment, which includes systems, devices, and electronic media. This policy is intended to keep the county's systems secure and promote effective communication and working practices.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Children and youth services. Respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with alternative living solutions to provide placement services for transitional and supervised independent living for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-five, through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. The contract authorization amount is five hundred thousand dollars and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Children and youth services. Respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with augmented intelligence technologies for a two-year subscription and implementation of data mining software for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-five, through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-seven. The contract authorization amount is five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars.
So moved.
No additional county funds are required.
I know it's a long one, so I'm eager. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human and youth services. Respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with Beverly's PGH to provide celebration and recognition boxes for children, as well as an infant formula and diaper bank for families for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-five, through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. The contract authorization amount is ninety thousand dollars and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Children and youth services. Respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with community family advocates to assist families with children under age eighteen with funds for emergent needs for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-five, through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. The contract authorization amount is four hundred thousand dollars and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Children and youth services. Respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with HSAO to provide enhanced service coordination for exploited children and adolescents for the period of June first, two thousand and twenty-five, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. The contract authorization amount is fifty thousand dollars and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Children and youth services. Respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with Invisaware Technology Corporation to provide safety devices and subscription services to staff for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-five, through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. The contract authorization amount is sixteen thousand dollars and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Children and youth services. Respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with Speak Right to provide translation services for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-five, through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. The contract authorization amount is twenty-five thousand dollars and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Children and youth services. Respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with Avanco International to provide CAPS upgrades for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-four, through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five. The contract authorization amount is eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents, and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. Respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with accessibilities to provide early intervention services for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-five, through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. The contract authorization amount is two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. Respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with the chief of support to provide early intervention services for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-five, through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. The contract authorization amount is seventy-two thousand dollars, and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. Respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with the Alliance for Infants and Toddlers to provide early intervention service coordination for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-five, through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-six. The contract authorization amount is ten thousand dollars, and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maggi?
Yes.
Ms. Janus?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. Respectfully request the Commissioners approve a provider agreement with blueprints to assist Washington County BHDS and Carillon Health of Pennsylvania by providing CFST surveys of Pennsylvania by providing CFST surveys to monitor the quality of mental health services for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026. The contract authorization amount is $175, I'm sorry, $175,000 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, what's the difference of a decimal? Yes. I'm sorry, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with Carillon Health of Pennsylvania to provide base client utilization information for reporting purposes for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026. The contract authorization amount is $50,470 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with Diversified Human Services to provide early intervention service coordination for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026. The contract authorization amount is $175,000 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with Diversified Human Services to provide intellectual disability services for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026. The contract authorization amount is $195,133 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved, I'm sorry.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with Erie County Care Management to provide intellectual disabilities services for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026.
So moved.
Contract authorization amount is $2,500 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with Healing Bridges to provide intellectual disabilities services for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026. The contract authorization amount is $35,000 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with Laughter and Language to provide early intervention occupational therapy and speech pathology services for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026. The contract authorization amount is $12,000 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with Medical Decision Logic to provide a web-based application for a screening, prevention, and tracking program known as BH Works for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026. The contract authorization amount is $3,500 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with Pediatric Therapy Professionals to provide early intervention services for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026. The contract authorization amount is $175,000 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with Bridget A. Relman to provide guardianship for an individual with intellectual disabilities for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026. The contract authorization amount is $2,858 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with Frank C. Romi Jr., Esquire, to serve as the Mental Health Review Officer for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026. The contract authorization amount is $25,000 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with Specialized Therapy and Related Services to provide early intervention services for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026. The contract authorization amount is $78,000 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with Therapeutic Early Intervention Services, LLC, to provide early intervention services for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026. The contract authorization amount is $230,000 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with the Washington County Transit Authority to provide pair transit services for an individual with intellectual disabilities for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026. The contract authorization amount is $1,560 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Behavioral Health and Developmental Services respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with the Western Pennsylvania School for the Deaf to provide early intervention and special instruction hearing services for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026. The contract authorization amount is $12,000 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Services respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with Donald and Boland and Associates to provide administrative and supervisory support services for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026. The contract authorization amount is $208,964 and no additional county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Services respectfully respectfully request the commissioners approval grant allocation agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services for MAP in the amount of $2,388,581 for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026, and no county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Services respectfully request the commissioners approval provider agreement with the Washington County Transportation Authority for management of MAP in the amount of $2,388,581 for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026, and no county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Services respectfully request the commissioners approval renewal lease agreement with Comprehensive Community Services for office space located at 250, 250 Chamber Plaza in Shawlourin. This space is used for Mon Valley location of the Washington County Department of Human Services. The agreed upon rent is $1,298.25 per month and is effective September 1st, 2025 through August 31st of 2027, and no county funds are required.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Human Services respectfully request the commissioners approved opioid settlement funding agreements with the recommended providers for a total amount of $842,617. All agreements are subject to approval of the solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
Before I do a roll call, I would be remiss not to talk about this a little bit. I have the audience is two very special people. This is the opioid settlement money. Today we have Sean and Melissa Naren, and thank you for being here. Of the projects that we're approving today is a Sean Patrick House. They unfortunately lost their child with the battle of addiction and the poisons on the street. They've taken a great deal of their time and money and put this towards a recovery house that's going to be second to none. This is, I've talked to them ad nauseam about this. The job that they want to do and their goal is to make sure that no one has to bear the just absolutely incomparable imaginative loss of losing a child. And I thank you for being here this evening or this morning. I thank you for taking your money and taking your time and taking your commitment to helping this just tragedy that we have with the poison on the streets. This opioid settlement money is going to go to great things. And you putting your commitment to this and you putting your son's name on this house, I just, I can't thank you enough for your commitment. It's an honor to vote for this, so. Roll call please.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing respectfully request the commissioners authorize the advertising for proposals for payroll services.
Mr. Sherman, I would move to table this since we've not had a chance to talk with the controller or other than us exchanged some emails the past 24 hours, chance to discuss among commissioners, so I would move to table this.
This is payroll QQ?
Yes, QQ.
Okay. I would like to vote on this as approved. This is an opportunity to look at the finances of it. You know, the purpose of the conversations that I'd like to have will be engaged and we have real numbers to look at. I understand your concern with this, but again, this is not an opportunity to make any final decisions. This is the Board of Commissioners looking at what's best for the taxpayers, looking at final numbers of how much it's going to cost to keep this in-house or to move this to private sector, so if that, I do not approve of the table.
Well, point of order, if it's not second, then it's dip, I guess.
I am not seconding that because this is not a vote to move payroll, this is a vote for RFP to look at the pricing.
And that being said, I, okay, I understand, I've always been an advocate of taxpayers' dollars, and I just, my only issue is, other than the last 24 hours and the emails that we exchanged, which we have talked a little more about.
Is there a second on the table? Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, is there anything else?
No.
Is there a second? Motion to table, dots for lack of second. Chief Clerk, please continue.
You have to call for the vote.
We're going to vote to.
You have to call for the vote on the QQ.
Okay, so at this time, for a point of order, we're voting to approve QQ. Roll call please.
I mean, that's, there hasn't been a motion made yet.
I will now entertain a motion for a submission QQ.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing on behalf of information technology respectfully request the commissioners approval agreement for software to access the imagery libraries with Pictometry International Corporation doing business as Eagleview in the amount of $6,750 and will be funded from Act 13 monies.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing on behalf of buildings and grounds respectfully request the commissioners approval agreement with Johnson Controls to provide installation and fire alarm monitoring services for eight cellular diodes to replace the city of Washington's Gainwell system. This contract will be effective September 1st, 2025 through August 31st of 2026 unless otherwise terminated pursuant to a 30-day written notice. The cost will be $980 per dialer per year and $8,782.33 for installation and labor and will be funded from the buildings and grounds operating budget.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing on behalf of buildings and grounds respectfully request the commissioners approve the 2025 Centox Corporation price list for the county's current service agreement for the rental of formats and uniforms. This extension will be effective date of agreement through December 2025 under the original agreement terms and conditions.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority respectfully request the commissioners approve the extension of the Federal Aviation Administration MOA renewal agreement for an additional 20 years for space to construct, operate, and maintain their navigation aids.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing on behalf of finance respectfully request the commissioners approve the extension to the Professional Services Agreement with Cash Fest 3+1 Company for treasury analysis and liquidity services at an annual fee of $250 per million. This extension will be effective for one year and terms are contingent upon mutual, excuse me, contingent upon mutual approval of annual renewals.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing on behalf of information technology respectfully request the commissioners approval contract addendum with Ford Office Technologies to provide 16 additional Dell 3.84 terabyte data center systems at a total cost of $1,000 per month for 56 months.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing on behalf of information technology respectfully request the commissioners approval renewal agreement with CDW-G for the Ninja One at a total cost of $26,081.92. This purchase is in accordance with the pricing of Pennsylvania State Contract CoStar 6 and therefore does not require bidding. Cost will be paid through IT's operating budget.
So moved.
Second, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Purchasing on behalf of public safety respectfully request the commissioners approve the renewal of the Pro Care Field and Technical Service Support Agreement with Stryker for the county's AEDs. This agreement will be effective May 1st, 2025 through April 30th of 2029 at a cost of $14,370.50 per year and will be paid with general and emergency management funds.
So moved.
I'm sorry. Yes, roll call please.
Mr. Mangi?
Yes.
Ms. Janas?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
That's all I have. Are you sure?
Great job, Chief Clerk.
Let's give an applause for Cindy.
Why, why? We haven't been that long enough, you know, it's quite some time. All right, this time it brings us to public comment. We have Tom Lonich signed up from South Strabane, a public comment. You have three minutes, Mr. Lonich.
Good morning, my name is Thomas Lonich, L-O-N-I-C-H. I'm a resident of South Strabane. I've appeared before this board numerous times raising questions, requesting documentation. As spiced out in itself on transparency, I have received little answers to the questions I raise. So I'm here again today as I was in May, and I will again state, while the Washington Mall appears to be in a state of significant deterioration, such condition was not brought about by any fire or natural disaster, but appears to result of because of decisions made by the owners of the mall not to maintain the property. For such decisions, they will be awarded an outlay of expenditures of taxpayer's money of up to $6 million regarding this demolition. Earlier this week on Monday, again, in an attempt after seeing the article in the paper that demolition is imminent, there apparently is some groundbreaking ceremony scheduled for tomorrow. Trucks are mobilizing at the Washington Mall for demolition. I requested of this board, through its right to know officer, as well as the Redevelopment Authority, for specifics as to the agreement. I was informed that Washington County's response, no document currently exists as responsive to your request. When the executed document pertaining to your right to know request becomes available, a copy will be forwarded to you. Similarly, the Redevelopment Authority indicated this time we do not have any fully executed documents, which is surprising to me since you're going to move dirt, I understand it from the county square building to fill holes in the Washington Mall. What I find most egregious is after giving the families who owned the Washington Mall